You know, I just charged this.
All right, good evening and welcome to the June 24th meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting in order.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Matt Ogden. Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zorn Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone has had a chance to review the consent agenda, would anyone like to remove anything? Not, I'll accept the motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Vess, second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Zorn Vess.
Here, yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Go too fast.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
I'm still signing on.
Oh, funny.
All right, first up, we have service awards and the first one is Matt Sloan, 20 years with the Nixa Police Department.
Mayor, Council, Officer Sloan could not be with us tonight, but I would like to share a few nice words about him and I'll start off by telling a quick story. Matt Sloan was one of the people that I feel trained, back in the day, whenever we were on the road. And so he comes to me as a young rookie officer and I'll never forget the look on his face whenever he was asked a question that he didn't know. He had a patented look that he could, he would turn his head slowly and look at me with these wide eyes, like, please give me the answer to this question. Obviously, he's come a long way in the 20 years that he's been here from that rookie police officer. He is currently serving in our Investigations Division as a detective. He's done a wide variety of different things for the police department. He, he's served in a supervisory position, he was on the SWAT team, he was on our, he's part of our CIT team. He recently has focused a lot of his energy and effort into department health, mental health and well-being of our officers. He leads the way in that area. And I will tell you that he is a tremendous asset for us as a investigator. He is well-known throughout the county and beyond for his skills in investigations. And he serves the police department in the city of Nixa with a lot of integrity and he brings a lot of experience. He is a fan favorite at the Citizens Police Academy because of his straightforward approach in telling stories. He can certainly tell stories because he's been around a long time and seen a lot of things. But he's certainly a wonderful asset for the police department. We're happy to have him for these 20 years.
Thank you. Next up is Jaren Percival, five years with the Electric Department.
Mayor, Council, Jaren could not be here tonight either. He had a ball game and he told me he's more scared of his wife than he is me. So that's the reason he's not here. Jaren started with us with, on the Tree Department. We moved him up and he's one of our apprentices. This is his fourth and final year going through an apprenticeship program. He's at top of his class. He's a natural leader. One of the big things that stood out was last summer when we had the big storm and we called in help. He volunteered and not only was a bird dog for one team, city that came in, but two. So he's a natural leader. He's always willing to go on storms, been on several all over the country. We are very proud to have him and he does us a great job. He's going to be a really good lineman once he graduates this winter. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the visitor section, we had someone call ahead and sign up. Dave Lofton, like to speak about honeybees.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Honorable council members, thank you for this time. My name is Dave Lofton. I'm here representing the Bees Alive Club that meets here in Nixa over at the Senior Center once a month. I'm also a member of the Missouri State Beekeepers Association. I realize time is short, so how many of you are aware that honeybees produce or pollinate a large percentage of the food that we eat? Everybody nodding or say, good, that'll save some of the exposition. How many of you are aware that honeybees are threatened in North America by the existence of a parasite? I've got a couple of head shaking no's, so suffice it to say that a parasite called the varroa mite a little over 30 years ago made its way into North America and has now proliferated across the country and down into South America. This mite travels on the backs of adult bees, primarily the drones that are allowed to move from hive to hive. And then it will prey on the larvae of the honeybees and get down in the cells as that larva is getting ready to pupate and suck the juices out of that poor little grub and weaken it. It doesn't kill it, but what it does is reduce the resistance of that particular bee to diseases. And enough of these mites that reproduce in the cells and get into all the other grubs causes a weakness in the colony and leads to colony collapse disorder. And that's what has reduced the population of honeybees in North America, not only in bee trees out in the forest, but also in apiaries kept by competent beekeepers. So that's led to a movement called Save the Bees, much like Save the Whales was 40 and 50 years ago. And a lot more people becoming aware of honeybees and wanting to help save and getting interested in beekeeping. Nixa Hardware is the number one supplier of beekeeping equipment in southwest Missouri. There's two and a half full aisles of beekeeping equipment over there. Tractor Supply here in Nixa also sells beekeeping equipment. This year in April, Nixa Hardware had sold 120% of all of the equipment they sold in 2023. It's just growing exponentially with the interest in beekeeping. We partner with the hardware store every year to do, to teach a beginning beekeeping course. And this year, we trained 50 new beekeepers in March. Cities, municipalities are very good habitat for honeybees. The wide variety of trees and ornamental shrubs that people plant in their yards, both for shade and flowering, provides a lot of nectar and honey, or pollen for the bees. One mature tree can yield as much honey as one acre of clover. There's four tulip poplars right across the street by the Brown Derby Liquor Store that all are very good honey-producing trees. Now, don't ask me how I know they're by the liquor store, but they're there. Bees exist here in Nixa and we know this because we get calls every year during swarm season. Swarming is a natural reproductive act of honeybees where when they get prosperous in the spring and build up, the queen will fly off with approximately 50% of the population of that hive and look for another place to set up housekeeping. And they will cluster somewhere in a bivouac while they send out scouts looking for a new cavity. And this makes the news every year. This year, the Indian Wells Tennis Tournament was stopped for a couple of hours because they clustered right on the wire cam. One of the Dodgers games was delayed for a couple of hours because they clustered on the backstop. Here in Nixa, they get in trees, they get in shrubs, they get on the sides of houses, hang on people's port crews, and we get calls both here and through Nixa Hardware to come and remove them. That's when the bees are the most docile. They have not seen the Killer Bee movies. They're not going to try to sting somebody to death. They're just hanging out there waiting to find a new home. They exist now in walls of buildings, in hollow trees, and probably a few hives or so inside the city limits. We had one colony or one house about four blocks directly north of here last year that called us because they had bees in the eaves and they needed to have them removed. There's a guy in Rogersville that makes a full-time living doing nothing but removing bees from structures. He was on the news a while back taking bees out of a store up in Lebanon, out of a brick wall. So we know that bees are here already. The current Nixa ordinance allows for beekeeping, bees and other farm animals to be kept on land that is zoned for agricultural use only. And what we are asking for, because a few years ago you altered that for chickens in backyards, as long as the homeowner met a certain set of criteria. So we're asking that you consider doing the same thing for a variance to allow backyard beekeeping as long as the homeowner can meet a certain set of criteria, and other municipalities have done this. Some of those criteria include a six-foot-high privacy board fence fully around the backyard where bees are out of sight, out of mind. It also helps keep the neighborhood children from getting in there and causing mischief. And it forces the bees to fly up and over, so they're going to be above head height by the time they cross anybody's path. If you went out here walking across the lot and through those trees, you'd probably have bees flying over your head now and you wouldn't know it. Other criteria could be a source of water in the backyard, proof of beekeeping experience of at least five years, or proof of having had a training course in beekeeping. We wouldn't want any novice idiot just to buy a hive and start parking it and not know what to do with it and how to take care of it. And have at least 5,000 square feet of space in their lot in order to be able to have up to two colonies. If they had a greater sized lot, we might consider suggesting a lot more amounts of bees. So that is what I'm here to ask you to do. We'd be happy to help if any of you wanted to draft that ordinance or adopt the idea. We'd help work with you. And at this time, I'd entertain any questions you might have.
I actually believe our, our ordinance is a little different because it says that bees have to be in, like what you said, in an agricultural area, but it doesn't actually say that bees cannot be in a residential area. So it's a little, it doesn't necessarily say you can't, but I do like the idea of working with you guys to come up with something that would kind of make sure we have responsible beekeeping. Because I probably just learned more about bees than I have ever known in my life, so. And I think we probably all have a little bit to learn about these. So yeah, I would definitely be interested in working with you guys on this and I, Darlene was about to say something.
I was going to ask, I'm not a math person. How big is about 5,000 feet?
5,000 square feet would be 50 by 100.
Oh, okay.
If my math is correct.
Okay.
That's a pretty decent sized lot.
Yeah.
Now, you don't want to crowd them in. I kept bees on my back deck, but I live on South Gregg Road. But they were right outside the deck door and then I'd go out there in the evening and just sit and watch them. Grandkids would come out and walk behind the hives and there was no problem. Most of the time, unless you harass them, bees are not going to be attacking anybody. If you try to break into their hive and start stealing honey, especially during a time when there's a dearth and not a good nectar flow going on, then they're going to get rather defensive. But that's only if you're getting in their hive and messing with them. There are times that I've worked in shorts and a tee-shirt with no other protection and the bees wouldn't pay any attention to me. I pulled out combs and harvested honey, but you got to know what you're doing, too.
I have another question because we had a lady a few years ago who came because she was very upset because the mosquito spray she said was killing all of, everything in her yard. And I know we spray later in the evening usually to avoid doing the bees and stuff like that. Would that be a problem, do you think?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Would that be a problem if we sprayed?
Someone on the Facebook page asked that question. As soon as, as Nixa announced they're about to start spraying for mosquitoes and they're going, oh my God, you're going to kill all the bees. You're only spraying in the evening after seven o'clock, I believe. And for the majority of days, and this is, we're at the longest days of the year right now. The bees are back home and hanging out because the nectar has dried up, especially on these hot days. The flowers that produce nectar, they get that in the morning and you see them coming back to the hive and just hanging out and loafing because there's not much to do. So they're going to be back home. Yeah, you may kill a few that are late flyers, but that's not going to be that big a deal. There are some people that, that got upset in our Facebook group about it, but I was going, don't, don't worry about that. I get a lot bigger welts off mosquito bites than I do off bee stings.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Lofton will definitely be in contact.
Okay, thank you very much. You have my telephone and email addresses, I believe? Okay, I'll come right to you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ron Sanders.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ron Sanders. Live over here in Nixa. Do y'all want the address? All right, it's been a while. Tonight, I just wanted to come up here and say our civility, you know, may be tested over the next few months. We've been through a couple of rough patches, but I know Nixa and Christian County has proven that even with the most controversial subjects, we can get through it with level head, level headedness and a civil discourse about, just about anything. And well, the silly season is about to start up again with elections and all of that. And I just would like to encourage everybody to have a little bit of grace and approach all of these difficult subjects with just a little bit of civility of the tongue. So that's my message for the night and I hope that everybody can have a little bit of grace and a little civility in their voice. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. No one else has signed up, but if you would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, you can do so at this time. I will close the visitor section. First reading, Council Bill 2024-18.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2024-18, An Ordnance of the Council of the City of Nixa, Amending the 2024 Annual Budget in the Amount of $150,472 for the Purpose of Funding the Two Additional Positions Within the Police Department, Presenting Is Police Chief Joe Campbell.
Mayor, Council, as everyone knows, we've, back in 2023, in April, we passed a three-quarter cent sales tax to fund public safety with the understanding that that money would be used to hire police officers and address our budget, or I'm sorry, our building issues as well. During our 2024 budget discussion, we had talked about the addition of officers during the 2024 budget cycle and it was determined at that time that we would look at the revenues generated from the sales tax at around mid-year. Well, we're at that mid-year point and at this point, we feel pretty comfortable with proposing the addition of two additional officers for the department mid-year and then a certain number of promotions as well to go along with that so we can restructure and realign some responsibilities within the organization. If you were to check the dashboard, I think right now we're sitting at about 1.3 million is what we've collected so far. So we feel very comfortable in that we would be able to afford not only the promotional processes that we're going to engage in, but also the addition of the two police officers. As hiring goes, you know, I can tell you that ebbs and flows. There was a time just not so long ago that we were fully staffed. We have not fully staffed at this time, but I do feel confident that we are, we have a continually recruiting. Sorry, it must have turned off. Can you hear me now? So I feel, as I was saying, I said I feel confident about our ability to hire and retain people as we move through this process. We've ebbed and flowed this year. We are down a couple of officers, but I do feel like we're constantly recruiting and we always have interests, so it's just a matter of getting the right people through the process and getting them hired. So at this point, I'm very comfortable with adding the two positions and, and you know, filling them by the end of the year, which is the goal, obviously. In addition to that, the promotional opportunities for the individuals inside the department would be handled between now and sometime in the end of the year. And so when you put all that together, we're looking at that budgetary amendment of just over $150,000, but that would go a long way and getting the two more officers, that would bring our total up to 46 officers in route to that 53 number that we've talked about so many times. If you have any questions, I am available to answer them.
Any questions? I will say I do like these types of updates and stuff and throwing out all the figures because one of the main things whenever people vote and approve an additional tax on anything is the transparency and knowing where the money's going and when it's being spent. I do think you guys have done a really good job on this law enforcement tax of continually bringing it forward and showing how much money it's bringing in, where the money's going, and that we are sticking to our word that we made the voters to get this passed. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right. If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. I will close the public hearing. No other questions? Moving on, Council Bill 2024-19.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2024-19, An Ordnance of the Council of the City of Nixa, Approving the Plenary of the Subdivision Known as Century Heights, Which is Generally Located in the 1500 Block of North Owen Road And Authorizing Certain City Officials to Take Certain Actions Upon the Filing of a Final Platt, Presenting Is Planning and Development Director Scott Gabby.
I'm here. Good evening. So, Mayor, Council, good evening. This is Century Heights Subdivision. It's in the 1500 Block of North Owen Road. We talked about a little bit of this last year because we rezoned a portion of it to, from R1 to R4, which is for duplexes. So this subdivision does have two different zoning districts in it. They are proposing 27 single-family lots, 12 duplex lots, which ends up having 51 dwelling units in total. And then they also have some large sinkhole areas which will be maintained in common areas, which means there will be an HOA for the maintenance of that. It is stated on, dang it, okay. So this gives you some context as to where it is in the city. It is north of the bowling alley, north of Tracker Road. There's a large substation up there along Owen Road. It is the yellow and the tan area. You can see that it's, to the west is mainly property out in the county, but it is single-family dwelling units that is there. To the south is a radio tower and to the east is undeveloped highway commercial property. So this is the preliminary plat. It's a little hard to read due to the green topo lines on it, but if you notice on the, on the left side, on the west side of the plat, you'll see that the access, it only has one access road to Owen Road and it does cut through a sinkhole. I'll get more information on that in a little bit, but that is one of the common areas is that sinkhole and then there's another one a little bit to the east. That's another common area. And then to the, on the north side of the plat is the other common area, which is all unbuildable due to overhead electric lines, floodplain and numerous sinkholes. So they are making the best use of what they can with the property that they have. All lots are going to be served by Nixa Utilities, water, sewer and electric. This is an opportunity for the Water Department to link in with RDE, do some of that in this area as both of those water systems are in this area. All lots do conform to minimum lot standards for both single-family zoning and for R4 zoning. This is where the sinkholes are. This is the main thing that we were waiting for before bringing this to council was identifying and having these sinkholes studied. So you'll see Sinkhole A again. Normally, we do like to see roads avoid sinkholes. That is always our first thing with sinkholes is to avoid, but there are a lot of instances where we can't do that and this is one of those instances. So we do have in our tech spec manual ways for utilities and roads to go through sinkholes in an environmentally friendly way. So that is something that will come if approved by council. The construction plans will also have some supplemental information in it on, on how they're going to be going through the sinkhole, how they're going to plan to, to make sure they're not causing any issues and then that will be reviewed by a registered geologist that we have under contract. So you can see A and B are going to be disturbed. C is only partially affecting the property, but that could be an area where they'll have an emergency access route. I'll get to that in a second. G is not necessarily identified as a sinkhole. It's just a low spot that holds water. So it's been advised that they remediate that area properly to make sure that it's not a breeding ground for mosquitoes and also to make that a buildable lot again. And then to the north again, you can see that there's a sinkhole. There's a couple of other sinkholes up there, but it's not showing on there. So the other aspect to this property is that this is the floodplain map, so there is floodplain affecting this as well. So it's got a lot of, a lot of issues going on with it. The main issue that we see will be two means of ingress and egress for this property. I put the whole code section in the memo for you guys to, to make a better judgment on, but there is acceptance that if there is only, if the property only can reasonably have one ingress egress, then it's possible that emergency access may be required. So again, the property owner was attempting to use the service road to the lift station, but that is not a reasonable route as that road is strictly just for city staff to get to the lift station and it has other issues with it. It washes out quite frequently. So if he were to, if we were for some reason to give him an easement on that, he would be responsible for maintaining that whole road, which is pretty long. So he's kind of proposed, if you look in the southwest corner at the end of Domino Court, there's a vacant lot there, 48. Again, it's primarily impacted by a sinkhole, but that is the same property owner that potentially, potentially the same property owner that owns the property to the east. So they are in contact. They are working out if they can get an easement across there to provide emergency access route. And again, it would split two developable lots, a single-family and a duplex lot, but due to setbacks, there will be enough space between there that they can reasonably still maintain and access easement through there. And then whenever future development occurs to the east, they do have a road stubbed out in that corner. If that future development were to tie into that one, then they can get rid of the emergency access road. What am I missing? North Owen. North Owen Road is a collector-level street and they did do a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study determined that this subdivision would not negatively impact the level of service of North Owen Road, so there is no off-site road improvements required for this development. The developer is going to be dedicating additional right-of-way for the collector-level corridor for North Owen Road, so there is a little bit of right-of-way dedicated in that area to conform with the collector-level status that Owen Road is. This was read in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission at their previous meeting earlier this month and nobody approached the commission, so the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to Nixa City Council. Staff does recommend approval as this does conform to all R1 and R4 requirements. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to help.
I have a question. Sinkhole A, does it retain water or is it just a low spot?
It does retain water. It actually goes to the other side of Owen Road as well and I don't know how long it retains water. That's something that they'll have to evaluate when they're doing their development plans. There'll be stormwater analysis performed, so that's another.
I was just curious, because I know on Nicholas, there's that one piece of road that goes between a sinkhole here and a sinkhole here and it seems to be holding up okay.
That is exactly what happens with this piece of Owen Road, but in the sinkhole evaluation, they noted that there's been no issues with that section of Owen Road. For whatever reason, I guess it doesn't wash it out in any way, it just maybe just rises and falls. There's no flowing waters.
Thank you.
That other access road, you said it would come out on Lot 38 or 48?
It'll split those two lots in the southwest corner, kind of pretty much go along the property line there.
Again, I'm not seeing Lot 48.
It's kind of hard to point out on this one.
Okay, so it'll go between 33 and 32?
I believe those might be the numbers.
Right in the corner?
I can't read it from here.
I thought you said Lot 38 or 48.
And again, they're still working on the logistics of that, so it's potential. And if they are unable to get to an agreement on emergency access road, there is in the International Fire Code that any subdivision with more than 30 dwelling units, that's only served by one access road, they will have to sprinkler all the dwelling units, which is uncommon in this area, but again, it's an option if needed for them.
Yes, I'm also concerned of the main road going over a sinkhole. What if that caves in?
Surprisingly, this happens all over this area. We have a lot of main roads that go through.
The only entrance into a neighborhood, though?
Not usually.
Everything around this to the north and west is county, not city, correct?
Correct.
This is another kind of example of where we have issues with police department and Nixa PD would serve that, however, they would have to go into the county to get to it, which is a problem, in my opinion.
This property was originally annexed in 2003, so it has been inside city limits for quite a while.
Okay. Any other questions?
This guy I was kind of looking at earlier and again, I think everybody's a little concerned about the one entrance and exit and I seen the 50-foot easement, but I didn't see anything that really called out the width of the road and I know we've had a few with the price of asphalt and stuff kind of go with a skinnier road that has no parking on one side, but is there anything with emergencies or stuff that would make sure that that road's wide enough that fire trucks can get in there and stuff to that nature? I don't know.
Yeah, we can require, it doesn't state anywhere on the plat or even in the engineering report as to the exact width of the road, but looking at it compared to the other ones, it looks like it's probably being proposed as 27 feet of paved surface. We can recommend that that be 30 feet, which is where parking is allowed on both sides and then the rest of the roads in that subdivision can go down to 27, but that is a good recommendation, yes.
We didn't have to have bike paths on it?
Excuse me?
We didn't have to have bike paths on it?
A bypass?
Bike paths.
Oh, bike path? Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe there's any map trails going through this piece of property.
Would we want it to be 30 feet, though, and allow parking on both sides if it's a 20, if there's sinkhole concerns? Just a thought.
Nothing in our code, but yeah, obviously, we probably wouldn't want any additional strain on the sinkhole area, but there are two residential lots there along the south side between the sinkholes. There are actually three residential lots there, so there's potential that somebody could be parking on the street right there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this. Come on up. You wouldn't mind providing your name and address to Mrs. Coffey? That'd be great.
My name is Robert Staub, S-T-A-A-B. I live at 909 Strawberry Court, Nixa, and my residence actually butts right up against here on Strawberry Court and some of the information on that sinkhole, I'm just letting you know since somebody had a question on it. Water goes in between my residence and my neighbor's residence and then hooks into that sinkhole and has for the last 20 years, I've been there for 20 years. Water disappears. It doesn't sit very long, it just goes down. It doesn't never, I've never seen water cross the road. Now, you do have the floodplain across, it gets a lot of rain and water over there, but water from there doesn't flow over and then go across Owen Road. It just goes there and sinks and it's usually gone pretty quickly, so it's not like there's just a bunch of standing water there, a lot even on heavy rains. It disappears pretty quickly, so my concern, obviously, for that area is what happens if that sinkhole and Sinkhole A drops, which, you know, it, obviously, we have them all over the area, but definitely knowing that area and being there for 20 years, I know I'm in Plot 59 on that map right there, would be my concern as far as that road going through there and then having something happen to, especially the emergency access, I'm also a paramedic for mercy, so emergencies are always kind of my thing, so. That's all I had, just wanted to give you information on that and like I said, I'm not an expert on any of that, but I have lived there a long time, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak on this one? Not, I will close the public hearing. And moving on to Second Reading, Council Bill 2024-17.
Second reading, Council Bill Number 2024-17, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending the 2024 annual budget in the amount of $22,000 for the purpose of funding the installation of an outdoor utility billing payment kiosk. Presenting is Project Facilitator Justin North.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the second reading on the utility billing kiosk that we discussed. It's going at the library or the community center, or sorry, the Nixa Community Branch Library. Last December, Council approved $12,000 for the purchase and installation of this after going through costs and reviewing then the need for an enclosure to protect the kiosk from outside weather, we decided that an additional $22,000 would be needed to get the installation and go through that process for a total of $34,000. So we are working with Sterling ATM on that enclosure. We're also working with Hamby Construction. We'll have a resolution later tonight doing that job order contract where they will purchase and install the unit for us. This budget amendment is coming from the Water Fund. It will be for the purchase of the enclosure, height clearance sign, shipping costs, installation costs, a camera system, working in coordination with the library's camera system, concrete work, electrical work, graphic design, and then also our annual lease with the library. So staff recommends approval of this budget amendment. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Orff.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this. Fair enough. I will close the public hearing. No more questions, I'll accept the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Next up is Resolution 2024-38.
Resolution Number 2024-38, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa.
Actually, Becca, hold up one second. With this being money going to the Chamber of Commerce, I will need Darlene to recuse herself. Since Mr. Vess is not an employee of the Chamber, I don't believe he would need to recuse himself on this one or the next. Sorry for interrupting. Go ahead.
Resolution Number 2024-38, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with the Nixa Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $10,000 for the city sponsorship of the Sky High Firework Celebration 2024. Presenting is Assistant City Administrator Cindy Robbins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Becca said, this is a resolution for a contract with the Nixa Chamber of Commerce for the Nixa Sky High Firework Celebration. As you probably are already aware, the Nixa Chamber is having a fireworks celebration this Saturday, the 29th, at the Eagle Stadium from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. and the Chamber has requested a sponsorship from the city for $10,000 to assist in the expense of the fireworks. Encore, Encore Pyrotechnics will be providing the show. All the insurance requirements have been met by the Chamber and this $10,000 was budgeted in our 2024 budget for this year. Staff recommends approval. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Robbins? Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this. Is this the same company as last year? Cool. They did a great job. All right. No one like to speak? I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council? I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mr. Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. You get nervous at all right then when no one was saying anything?
No, no, we got more.
No, one more. Yep. Let her sit out there for a bit. All right. Moving on, Resolution 2024-39.
Resolution Number 2024-39, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, granting a permit to the Nixa Area Chamber of Commerce to authorize the display of fireworks for the 2024 Sky High Firework Celebration. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm back here this time. As we just heard from Ms. Robbins, the Chamber is having their 2024 Sky High Firework Celebration this Saturday. It will be conducted by Encore Pyrotechnics, which they are a competent company that can perform this type of display. Section 16-198 of Nixa City Code does require council to approve such acts inside Nixa City Limits, so the Chamber also has provided insurance as previously stated. So with all the information, staff does recommend approval.
I feel like we probably should have approved the permit before giving them 10 grand, huh? Just a thought. All right, any questions for Mr. Gaby? Thank you, sir. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this. Fair enough. I will close the public hearing. No other questions, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Vess, second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. She can come back. Thank you, Ms. Graham.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Resolution 2024-40.
Resolution Number 2024-40, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract in the amount of $28,000 with Hamby Construction LLC for the installation of a certain utility billing kiosk. Presenting is Project Facilitator Justin North.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this job order contract is an extension of the budget amendment that you've all just passed. The amendment provides the funds for the utility billing kiosk while this contract kind of allows us to expend some of those funds. This contract allows us to enter into an agreement with Hamby Construction. Hamby Construction is part of a cooperative that utilizes a Gordian for competitive pricing. This partnership allows Hamby to purchase the kiosk enclosure on our behalf and install it at the Nixa Community Branch Library. Approval of this contract will allow us to start the fabrication process of that kiosk enclosure. It'll allow us to get shipped to Public Works and finally installed by Hamby Construction. It has a total cost not to exceed 28,000, which still allows us to perform all of the electrical work, purchase the cameras, install the concrete pad and utilize a graphic designer outside of that, which will still be under budget or still be within budget. Specifically, this contract will allow for the design and assembly of the kiosk canopy, the shipping of it, transportation to the job site, installation on the concrete pad and then also purchasing and installing the clearance sign. Staff is, or staff recommends approval of this contract. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Orff.
Thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council, I'll accept the motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mrs. Morris, second by Mr. Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. Okay. Next up.
Yeah, thanks for the heads up.
Mrs. Graham, on May 11th at the meeting, I said, get your pencils out and write down these dates.
You know, I've been busy since then. And I've been gone since then, so.
Luckily, Joe did it for you.
Joe is a wonderful person. I'm the liaison for the police department, but he really is the liaison for me, I think, because he.
Good luck with that.
He knows everything that's going on in the police department and he prepares things for me, so I appreciate that. I would hope he would know what's going on. Most of the stuff we have seen and heard before, so. I'm gonna talk now, my teacher voice, how's that? So, what do I push? Okay, what do I push?
Is back here, too.
I am not technology.
Off to a good start, Ms. Graham.
Now, I'll be honest. I have my. I started teaching field in 2006. None of this was around in 2006, okay? So I never had to really learn it, all of you young people. So, department structure, you've seen this before, it's pretty easy, the two police, deputy clerk, you have your support crew people, you have your operations. We're not gonna go into that too much. Budget? Well, we've talked a lot about the budget tonight because we like. I like our police department.
There we go.
Is that better? I'll hang on to this. We have 42 commissioned police. We have 42 commissioned police officers, one part-time officer, six civilian staff. We knew two years ago we needed to hire 11 more police officers. We did hire two, we're working toward doing more. As of the second quarter, coming at this term, we need nine more police officers. We've hired zero and we've lost two recently, so right now they're actually interviewing for police officers, and we still need to add to that to get us up to where we need to be. These are your staffing, you can see those. We have one chief of police, and that's Joe. We have... Tells you who we need to add, because we did put in our budget to add people to these positions, and that's actually coming as we go. You can't do it all at one time. We have to add a few at a time to go where they need to be. But we need to add four more officers, and we will get to that hopefully soon. We have totally commissioned 53 people, and total civilians are six. And they're pretty nice people, if you go over there and talk to them, they're very friendly. Operations Bureau. This is one thing, I love the police department puts this on Facebook every month. It was just on the other day about how many calls for service they've had for that month and all these different things, and it's pretty interesting to see each month how these come out, because it lays it out as exactly what they do all month, besides just sitting on the side of the road waving at people as they go by and watch people hit their brakes when they see the police cars, which I think is great. So far, I haven't had to be stopped, so that's good. Crash data. We have a lot of non-injury crashes. That's from people just not paying attention as they drive and usually hitting people in the rear of Roy Ballmart or Tracker Road and places like that, which are high-density areas, and there's a lot of people that try to beat those yellow flashing arrows. We've had 65 injury crashes, which is not too bad considering how much traffic we have out there, and no fatalities, which is really, really good for our area. 300 total crashes, that's so far, that's for last year, and that's not bad for a city our size. Investigations. I'd love to do this sometime. They have investigated 586 cases, cleared 440 of those, and 78% clearance rate, that is really remarkable, because most police departments don't get that at all. You can look at the services, 2,584 records and report requests were processed, and 824 items were taken in evidence. I know that's a problem we have over there, is in our evidence department is where to put things, right? That evidence room is crammed, and I think that's one of the things we're looking forward is making that better for them in the future. We do train our officers very, very well. Field trained six officers in 2023, and look at the hours of training that's provided, because they have to do training every month from what I see. They don't just sit and go through one set of training and say, "Hey, you're done." No, they have to do things every single month to keep them up to par. We have 34 fleet vehicles, and those are the newer ones. Do we have all of them in yet? We're still waiting on some, aren't we? Still waiting on a couple. And they like the new vehicles much better than the old ones, from what I understand. Dare. Our Dare officer is wonderful. Look at 1,440 students participated in Dare. I think that's remarkable, and I hope a lot of those kids keep that in the future and pay attention as they learn how to drive. My grandson turns 16 tomorrow. Kind of... He can't get his license until August, because he waited too late to get his permit, but it's kind of scary to think that he's going to be on the road. So I told him to watch out for y'all, learn to behave. We'll see. Crime prevention. We have lots of times where we are... Our police department is very, very visible, and I like this, too, because they make sure people know that they're around. 48 public events, five department tours, you can go and tour the department, eight neighborhood watch events, which are really, really important. If you live in a neighborhood and you don't have a neighborhood watch program, you really should get involved in one, because they can help you save your neighborhood. We used to live out in the county, and we had one, and actually, we had a guy that was casing our neighborhood one time, and the neighbors called the county on it, and they actually stopped him. And it's funny, because my husband knew him, he's, "What are you doing here in my neighborhood?" But because we took interest in it and did something about it, we were able to keep something from happening in our neighborhood itself. Dogs. Dogs are a problem, and it's going to be a bigger problem this next week because of the fireworks, because I was at my daughter's house last night, and their dogs were going crazy, because somebody's shooting fireworks off over here on Bittersweet, which is not in the... Not in the city. So they called me going, "What can we do?" I'm going, "Nothing, it's not in the city limits, they're not going to do anything, so tranquilize your dogs." We actually got 92 returned owners, which is good, and 20 were rescues. I'm not sure what happens with the rescued ones, but at least we are taking care of our dogs. No kill shelter, good. I like that, too. We do have a SWAT team. Somebody asked me one day if we had a SWAT team, because apparently they were visible in a neighborhood last month, and someone called me and said, "Hey, do we have a SWAT team?" I'm going, "I'm pretty sure we do," and they're, "What's in the board?" I went, "I don't know. It's not my business, too. You look out your window and see, I don't live in that neighborhood." Our canine unit, we had 60 deployments in 2023. Our canine dog is very aggressive, so most people don't want to mess with him if he gets turned loose. Even other officers from other departments don't want to have to deal with him, because he's pretty good. We have a drug task force officer coming in May, but came in May, which we'd put in on the agenda due, so that's a good thing to have, that we've got that one involved. And is that our officer?
That's one of our SWAT.
That's one of our SWAT team, okay. Employee recognition, which we do at our police banquets. Tyler Duval, is he still with us? He moved, didn't he? He moved on, and he was such a great guy. But you can see the ones that we actually gave awards to, and ones life-saving awards, I think, are really, really important, because these are people who got involved with some life-saving things that involve people that were in distress. And the fact that they were able to step in and do something to help them is very, very good. The police facility. It is in a design phase. Hopefully, we can break ground next year. We're still working on how that's going to happen, but it's something that we're really excited about the possibility of in the future. In April and May, we've had new car cameras put in and new evidence software that's been installed, right? So that's a big, big help right there, that we can get that going in. Couple other things I wanted to mention. The range is open, right? It's up and running, which is really good. They've talked about letting people that are alumni from the NIXA Police Academy go and use it at some time. They talked about having it open for hunters in the fall to be able to sight in their guns, which is a good policy to use for good PR in the public. We did talk at our alumni meeting about offering a scholarship for an external carry vest for officers. They cost about $300 each, and they're not as heavy as the regular ones, but they do the same duty, and it's really good for this time of year when it's really, really hot, that they can have something that's still protected but not as heavy as the other ones were. That's about it. I think our police department does an amazing job for what we have for them to do, and our retention rate is getting better. We still lose some occasionally for... We lost one officer because her husband moved or something. She was really good. So the fact that we're keeping the ones that we have and the ones that we've had in long term, like Officer Sloan, that's a wonderful thing to see, because it's... There's a lot of movement in police departments, and the fact that we're actually keeping a lot of ours is a testament to the fact that our police chief is doing a great job, and we have a great department to work with. So any questions that I might or might not be able to answer? Thank you, Joe. He's great to work with, that's why I like to be... That's why I like him to be my liaison.
Good job, Darlene. All right. Anything else from Council? I know we definitely have fireworks on Saturday.
Yep. Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Movies in the park on Friday.
Movies in the park on Friday.
That's the one...
And that's the ending of One NIXA One Read. So if there's anyone in here that hasn't gotten a book yet, we have some here at City Hall. You can grab one, hand a golden ticket.
Ah. And the pool's up and running and looks great. If you've not been over there...
Sure is.
Amazing. Good job, Matt.
Great job.
I have something. So the NIXA Downtown Revitalization Committee, they received a grant in the amount of $8,797 for some murals downtown. So they're going to be working to do that. They had some ideas of doing possibly a live mural that could be ever-changing type thing, talking about maybe putting a light or a camera in that little cutout area where they can have video of that, like when they paint the murals, they can publicize that and then also use it as kind of a part of art where people can change that periodically in that area. They're looking to do some artists locally to paint the murals and then... And stuff like that. So great opportunity for them to promote and kind of make downtown be a little bit more of an attraction, destination area.
Cool. Thanks. Anything else from Staff?
Just a reminder, city offices will be closed July 4th and 5th for the holiday.
And 5th, that's all I got.
All right. Well, there is nothing else. Meeting adjourned.